Okay, just in case we were not, I'll go ahead and call this October 5th, 2020 Meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. We have everyone present this evening. I think we're still waiting on a few counselors to call in, but we do have a quorum, so we're going to proceed accordingly. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Michelle, if you don't mind, I might have you lead us tonight, if that's okay.
Pledge of Allegiance to the place of the United States of America to the Republic of One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All.
Thanks, Michelle. I understand it's we're trying times calling in remotely. It is a challenge for us, so we're doing our very best, as is staff. So for the public participating tonight, please be aware, we are trying to do our best here, given the circumstances. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to our IT director and to ask if there's any communications from the public this evening. And if you are attending remotely to comment on the three public hearings, I would just ask that you wait until I call those individual public hearings. But if you have anything to share with the council, now would be your opportunity. Chris?
Okay, I will let the public know that they can, if they're calling in by telephone, they can use star three to raise their hand. And when they've finished, they can use star three again to put their hand back down. And that's for our telephone callers. And I will start with the only person that I see right now with their hand raised is Robin. And if I could ask our council members, anybody else that's not talking to mute their microphone, I'd appreciate it. We'll get some feedback. Robin, you're unmuted. Do you have something for the council?
Hi, yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, good evening. My name is Robin Peoni. I live at 1057 Creekview Court. Thank you, Mayor Malfeld, City Council, and staff for the exceptional work you do to serve the people of our city. Your work has been made extra challenging during these trying times of the COVID-19 pandemic and its economic impact, as well as with the upwelling of social unrest. And all of this during an election season. So I appreciate your time in addressing yet another concern, which is still with us, our changing climate. Tonight, I ask for your consideration in creating a resolution to support the Energy, Innovation, and Carbon Dividend Act, a bill which has been introduced to Congress. My husband and I are parents of two daughters who in recent years have graduated college and are starting to make their way in the world. We are proud of them and are very excited about their future. I believe, as responsible and caring citizens, we can create a future for all our children, where lives are saved, families are lifted up, our lakes and streams are clean, our outdoor heritage is preserved, communities thrive, and opportunity abounds as we transition to clean energy. The Energy, Innovation, and Carbon Dividend Act will reduce America's emissions by at least 40% within 12 years. This policy will create 2.1 million additional jobs over the next 10 years, thanks to the growth in the clean energy economy. This policy will also improve health and save lives by reducing pollution. Additionally, the carbon dividend puts money directly in people's pockets every month to spend as they see fit, helping low and middle-income Americans. The government does not keep any of the fees collected, so the size of government will not grow. Republicans and Democrats are both on board cosponsoring this bill together. The majority of Americans, including the majority of Montanans, support Congress taking action to protect our climate. This includes more than half of Republican millennial voters. In April of 2018, the City of Whitefish adopted a climate action plan which calls for the transition to a clean energy economy. I would like to thank the Climate Action Plan Standing Committee led by Hillary Lind for their steadfast work in implementing this plan. Endorsing the Energy Innovation Act supports this plan. Senator Danes and Tester and Representative Gianforte have all stated our changing climate is a concern. Supporting this legislation sends a strong message to our members of Congress to act on their concern. In conclusion, the Energy, Innovation, and Carbon Dividend Act is a simple, yet fair and effective bipartisan solution which continues our American tradition of ensuring a wonderful future for our children. Please support a city resolution endorsing this bill. Thank you.
Chris, if I just may chime in, Robin, I typically don't respond to public comment, but I will take an exception this evening. A former counselor, Melissa Hartman, was pursuing a resolution that the city would be considering before she stepped down from her position. And I've been in contact with her regarding elevating this or bringing this back to the council for consideration. And it's it's on the it's on the plate, it's on the list, and we hope to get to it here in the next month or two. But thanks for the reminder, and I will I will circle back with Melissa here in the next couple of weeks. Thanks for your comments. Chris?
And we do have, speaking of Melissa, we do have Melissa. So Melissa, you're unmuted.
Okay, thanks so much. I just want to second Robin's comments of appreciation for all the work that you've been doing as a city and as a council to navigate these challenging times. So just first and foremost, wanted to do that. And then with regard to HR 763, the Energy, Innovation, and Carbon Dividend Act, I just wanted to add for the record a few things, or a few reasons why I feel like this is so, so vital. And I appreciate your comments, John, about having this on the radar. But I just thought for the public record, I would add that, you know, I mean, certainly protecting our climate is so vital to the City of Whitefish as a community. We're known for our great outdoors, for our skiing, for our fishing, you know, hiking, cross-country, and so many really dependent on our climate. As most anybody who lives here know what it's like when we have bad fire seasons, smoke seasons, the impact to businesses, tourism. You know, all have the potential to have severe impacts on our economy. And then on a bigger scale, you know, just thinking about what we went through with the pandemic and the potential for food shortages. You know, I think about how how much more severe that all could play out with a climate crisis. And it's just vital that we be thinking about the impacts to our national security. It has been called a threat multiplier by our security agent, National Security Agency. It destabilizes, it has the potential to stabilize our country, impacts food and energy supply chains. It impacts naval bases, infrastructure, heightens competition for resources. So again, I just wanted to put that out there for the record so that people have an idea. Personally, and hopefully many people feel that supporting the Energy, Innovation, and Carbon Dividend Act is so, so important. So thank you very much for for listening and appreciate your time. And again, thank you for the wonderful work you're doing on behalf of the city.
Thanks, Melissa.
And I do not see any other hands raised at this point. Oh, I'm sorry. Richard, you are unmuted.
Thanks. Again, following up on Melissa, thanks, everyone, for all your hard work for the city, both council, members of the staff and the mayor. I just want to keep your feet to the fire on this particular issue with regards to this particular House resolution. I know it won't come up as the final, once you see it, but the sausage making of the Congress is interesting, to say the least. But I think it's important that the city weigh in as just one more voice in order to protect the environment.
Thanks, Richard. Further public comment, Chris?
I am not seeing any further hands raised.
Okay, how about any?
John, I do have one that was dropped off at City Hall that I can read.
Thank you.
This is from Pat Lotterell. Council members, I'm not sure I will get a response to this letter since none of the other correspondents has received any, but I want to bring up a traffic problem on the corner of Baker and Fourth. Many drivers, in order to avoid the stoplight on Baker and Second, take off for Avenue to Fourth and then turn right onto Baker South. Mountain View Manor is located at the west end of Fourth Street with the age and health issues of some of the residents, emergency services are involved. Whitefish County Union drops their drive-through onto Fourth Street. The problem, Fourth Street is approximately approximately 40 feet wide during summer and fall months. People working at WCU and going to the post office often park on Fourth Street. When both sides of the street are used, the traffic entering Fourth from Baker and the ones exiting Fourth onto Baker create a traffic nightmare. Add snow, banks, and the fall and the narrowing of the road, and you have an even bigger problem. She's enclosed a diagram that I shared with the council earlier to show the parking and traffic flow and applied orange highlighter to indicate that what would logically solve the problem. The reason, the bigger the vehicle they park in the smaller spaces, walk and driving needs, sites for all. Most vehicles are confined to seven feet wide, so two-way traffic becomes a problem. I am turning this letter and drawing into City Hall, hoping something can be done in this matter. And that was Pat Lotterell.
Letters electronically today, so thank you for that. Chris? Not seeing any additional communications from the public or volunteer boards. Is that correct?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, thanks, Chris. We'll turn to the council. Any any communications from the council regarding volunteer boards?
Mr. Mayor, just so you're aware, the both the Park Board and the Bike Pad Committee have voted to go to remote meetings, and we will do so on a go-forward basis, just so you know.
Great. Thanks, Frank. Additional reports from the council?
Also, the Tree Committee is going remote, and as needed.
Thanks, Rebecca. We'll move on to our consent agenda. I will turn it back to the council. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes from the September 21, 2020 regular meeting? The consent agenda does include extending the Sustainable Tourism Management Plan. Motion?
John, one moment. There was a resolution to extend the Highway 93 South Corridor under the volunteer boards.
I'm sorry.
Cover it on to the next page. Sorry about that.
That's quite all right. So we'll we'll move back to Resolution, what will be Resolution 20-37, which is a resolution extending the Highway 93 South Corridor Steering Committee, of which I'm a member. I think we discussed this at our last meeting, and we need a simple motion extending that Steering Committee so they can do the good work that they're doing under Hillary's and staff's direction. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve Resolution Number 20-37, a resolution extending the Highway 93 Corridor Steering Committee, South Corridor Steering Committee.
No, seconded by Ryan, did you second the motion?
Yes, I did.
Seconded by Counselor Henin. Further discussion? Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinell? Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Henin? Counselor Perry?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton? Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. That will bring us back to our consent agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes from September 21?
Changes on my end.
Why don't we get a motion out on the table, and then we will take your corrections and additions.
Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Frank. Is there a second?
Skint without correction.
Seconded by Counselor Norton. Rebecca, corrections?
Sweet, John. Thank you.
Would you like me to do a roll call, John?
Yes, please.
Counselor Quinell?
Yes.
Counselor Sweeney? Counselor Davis? Counselor Henin?
Aye.
Counselor Perry?
In favor.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. That motion does carry unanimously, and we will move on to item six of our agenda. We do have three public hearings this evening, and we'll start with ordinance number 20-13, an ordinance amending Title 11, zoning regulations, Chapter 3, Special Provisions, Section 42, multifamily development standards, and Section 43, mixed use and non-residential building development standards of Whitefish City Code. This is WZTA 20-03, and it was tabled from our September 8, 2020 meeting.
Yeah, good evening. So yeah, at the last meeting, you guys actually, it wasn't the last meeting, but on September 5th, you guys reviewed this and closed the public hearing. I'll just kind of give you a quick overview, since it's been about a month since you guys have looked at this. The council gave us some direction at one point to, when we did our our Inclusionary Zoning Legacy Homes program, we made some changes to the multifamily standards and the mixed use and non-residential standards in order to have some more robust site development standards and other criteria, so we made sure that we had, you know, we got better projects out of that. And through utilizing that for a year, we decided that we needed a few changes just to make things just a little clearer to the public and some of the developers that come forward. And so we had, you know, several changes that we were recommending to that section of the code to kind of make things a little clearer to people. Hang on one second. Let my staff report real quick. So just kind of a summary of the changes. We had some more flexibility for adding incentives for smaller massing of buildings, and then we added all new illustrations. Council had some issues originally with the illustrations that we had in there, so we decided to upgrade those to make them a lot nicer. And then, you know, specifically on the multi multifamily development standards, we basically clarified some language regarding the courtyard and some other things like that. Clarified where we had some illustrations that had text in there. We added some of that language into the actual code, things like organizing buildings around common spaces, courtyards, et cetera. We took out some language about retention ponds, because that's already in the public work standards, and then added some language about buildings not presenting blank walls and having articulation and modulation when it comes to multifamily buildings. And then we added some additional stuff for grading and tree retention, and then some additional language about what open space might mean. We had some developers trying to count land in the setbacks and things like that as open space. So we clarified that in there, basically saying that required setbacks and buffers and parking areas, access and turnarounds can't be counted as common open space. And we talked about some of the amenities that we'd be looking for for apartment buildings. So it's kind of an overview of that, of that standard. So the mixed use and non-residential standards. One of the things that we did have some issues with, and it came up during the town pump, is we originally had a required 25-foot minimum setback that we established. And so the draft that went through the planning board, we added some exceptions to that for things like plazas and seating areas, or if there's healthy trees. You know, if there's a private roads through there, they shouldn't be allowed in that area. The only thing in there can be healthy trees or landscape areas. And after looking through that and then listening to some of you guys' questions at the last meeting, I think might be our best bet to just kind of eliminate that section out of there. We already have standards in here that don't allow parking to be between the building and the street. And then the other standards in here, under, you're on page 37 of your packet. I don't know if I could share the screen if you want me to, or you guys have it available. But under the mixed use standard 11343 under B, where it talks about building orientation and multi-building sites, the first section talks about orientation. Buildings must be oriented towards the primary street frontage and public pass or sidewalks. Buildings on corner lots should be oriented towards the primary intersection. And then what I would recommend is just taking out that whole section A with with the 1 through 5 underneath it with the exceptions in there. And then just, we would move up B and C and D to make those A, B, and C, because all those things cover all that stuff. So we're getting the same thing out of it. We're just not being quite as prescriptive by saying it has to be 25 feet, because I think there's so many different circumstances that come up that that where we do want to see courtyards or plazas or existing tree frontages or existing, you know, trees or landscaping in that area. It just doesn't really make any sense to to make sure that it's 25 feet in every circumstance. When we already don't allow parking in, that's really the thing that we didn't want in there. So just as an example, you know, we're looking at pushing the building closer to the street. If you go down to Cowell Spell and and look at, you know, where Lowe's and those other buildings are, you can see on one side, on the right, as you're driving into Cowell Spell, that they have pushed a lot of those buildings, you know, where Famous Dave and some of those other buildings right up against the street, frontage, with the parking behind. But on the other side of the street, it's all parking lot where the old standard is. And that's kind of the look that we're trying to get, is we're we're pushing buildings as close as possible to the street to hide the parking and make it much more of a amenable place. So if you have questions about that, I'd be glad to talk more about that. There's some other things that we looked at changing in there, which, again, we have new illustrations in there. And really, it's changes are fairly minimal in that section. Apart from the new illustrations, we did clarify some things. We're talking about stepping down the building massing to help larger buildings fit with the context of the neighborhood. But I'm kind of just here to answer questions, since we already went through this once, and I know that you guys already closed the public hearing on this.
Thanks, Dave. I'll start with the council. Ben, any questions or comments?
Given the change that you proposed of removing that entire section, if the project comes through, I mean, do you worry that it's so vague without that, that we don't have any leverage to affect the change to the setback when it's needed?
I mean, the language in the code, you know, does say, you know, buildings must be located, or it talks about buildings must be oriented towards the private, you know, the street and public pass. You know, we show illustrations in there of how they're oriented to that. And really, if there there's any space between the building and the street, I mean, really, the only thing that can go in there is either public amenities, landscaping, courtyards, because they can't put parking in there. And so in order to maximize the site, because, you know, every site's going to try to maximize the parking, they're kind of forced to push the building as close as possible to the street. And we, you know, we have site review, we have architectural standards that have very similar language. For any non-residential or mixed-use building, we're going to go through all those processes too. So I really don't think there's any way out of it. We just aren't saying it has to be exactly 25 feet from the building frontage, or from the street frontage. And that was the issue that we came into. We were pushing them so close that there wasn't really room for courtyards, or if there was existing stand-to-trees, or you know, for instance, the old hospital site has a natural stand of trees, and we'd want to keep if someone was going to redevelop that site. You know, having this 25-foot maximum setback just makes it kind of confusing. And the exceptions really, I mean, it's all the kind of things that we're looking for, but we can do all that stuff without having that stuff actually in the code. It just gives us a little more flexibility.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Ben. Rebecca?
The only question I have about that, changing that, Dave, are we still going to see vegetative buffers? Or are we going to see buildings? As people
Yeah, I mean, we have, in the in the different zoning districts, have landscaping requirements that are in there. So I mean, this is citywide, and any place where mixed use or non-residential buildings permitted. So our landscaping chapter, as well as, you know, each of the zoning districts, which have certain landscaping requirements and buffering requirements, are going to apply whatever district they're in. We're looking at upgrading our landscaping chapter. It's one of the things on our list. So we're going to, you know, when we do that, we're going to have even more language in there about tree retention and things like that, that make that even stronger, but.
And and we'll have some way of limiting people taking trees out before we look at the situation?
Well, I mean, we have, you know, some tree retention standards in our subdivision regulations, and there's some in our zoning, but that's one of the things that we're going to try to really beef up in our landscaping chapter of the tree retention requirements. Right now, you get treated, you get credits for existing trees, but it really doesn't encourage you as much to save those trees. You know, a lot of people will just take them out and then replant trees. We're really, you know, trying to maximize that. I mean, every site's different, and, you know, it's pretty difficult to develop a site, especially for commercial use, without taking out a lot of the trees. Depending on how you're doing that, if it has to be regraded or anything like that, it's very difficult if you're even trying to save trees and putting them in green spaces. A lot of times, the root structures are so vast that you end up killing them anyway, but but we're definitely going to try to put every incentive possible to people to keep existing trees with their developments.
Or, yeah, I just think it's the one thing we hear over and over again is that people do not want to lose the big trees. And then we keep allowing it. And so I would, I'd really strengthen that if you can somehow. Okay, that's my only concern. The illustrations were really helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Andy, comments, questions?
Yeah, I guess it's a quick question, Dave. On page 37, under one orientation, and then item A, and you say eliminate the five subcategories under that. I guess my concern would be, you're saying it might be redundant improvements in the landscaping requirements, but would be a removal of number three. I just, once again, stating that healthy trees should be retained in perpetuity in those cases, and I think what it goes on further, say, be placed as close to trees as practical, and a plan must be submitted to maintain the health of those trees, along with a replacement plan for dead or dying hazardous trees. Even if it's redundant, I guess I would prefer to see that left in there. Would that be a problem if we just left that one and eliminated the other four?
Yeah, I mean, what we could do is put that in as A, basically. And then to get rid of the word exception at the beginning of it, and just change that to A, and that would keep that in there.
Okay, yeah, that that that's better. I just, like I said, that's just one of those things I'd hate to see. The other ones, I could see that, yeah, you're going to pick it up in in other aspects, but the trees, I think we need to hammer that home. As Rebecca said, we hear about it all the time.
I think that's a good idea, Andy.
Thanks, Andy. Frank, comments?
I have nothing further. I concur with Andy's suggestion, and I think that's a real good idea. I think that, I think dropping all of that, all of those exceptions out, or whatever you want to call them, would be wrong. I think we need to give some direction here as to what we really expect.
Thanks, Frank. Ryan?
No comments for me at this time.
Thanks, Ryan. Finally, Steve. Any comments?
Nothing else from me. Thank you.
Appreciate that. We do have, the public hearing is advertised as closed from the September 8, 2020 meeting. If there's no additional questions, a motion would be appreciated. additional questions, a motion would be appreciated.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I guess I would make a motion. See if I can get this right. I would move to adopt ordinance number 20-13, recommending our Title 11 of zoning regulations, Chapter 3, Special Provisions, Section 42, multifamily development standards, and also Section 43, mixed use and non-residential building development standards. The Whitefish City Code, WZTA 20-03, and that would be on a first reading, making the following change on item B, building orientation and multi-building sites. One orientation under, I would eliminate A. Section A, which would be numbers one, two, three, four, and five. Incorporating the language in Section 3, in the beginning of that, where properties front on one or more streets, new buildings must be located no more than 25 feet from the primary street frontage. Then going into the language under number three, buildings may be located, and we, I don't have to read all the way through that, so.
Thanks, Frank. Andy, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
It was seconded by Counselor Quinell, if I'm not mistaken?
Either of us will work.
Okay. Further comments on the motion?
Michelle, roll call quick. John, so, Andy, could you read that again? Cause it sounded like you were trying to keep the 25 feet section in there?
Um, I, well, okay, just a second, Dave. So we would just say orientation buildings, we, we would eliminate A entirely.
Yep.
And then we would begin at the end of the sentence, the second sentence under number one, then we would begin with the buildings may be located further away.
So I, I think we were just going right to three and getting rid of the word exception. And yeah, and then buildings must be located further away from the primary street. That would become A.
Okay, that would become, okay, right.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then four and five would go away too.
Correct, yes.
And then we don't have to renumber the other ones.
Yep, yep, okay.
Just making sure.
I, like I said, I didn't know if I was going to get that right or not, but.
Easier to fix it now than next meeting.
I wasn't good, but I had good intentions, so there you go.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Dave. Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinell?
In favor?
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Davis?
Favor.
Counselor Hennan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
I am in favor.
Counselor Norton?
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. And that motion does carry unanimously, which brings us to item 6B of our agenda, which is consideration of a request from Doug Hicke, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, for a conditional use permit to construct a guest house located at 1632 West Lake Shore Drive. The property is zone WR1, which is our one-family residential district.
Good evening. Uh, this is my project. Um, Chris, could I have the, could you pass the ball and I'll put up a site plan?
Hi, Wendy.
Hi. I'm going to share my screen, see if I remember how to do this. Site plan up there. Um, so again, this is a request for conditional use permit to construct a new two-stall garage with a two-story 1600 square foot guest house to the northwest of the existing home. Print of the entire structure is about 1700 square feet. The property is accessed off a shared driveway, which connects to West Lake Shore Drive, which is a publicly maintained road. The property is 0.89 acres, and again, is addressed at 1632 West Lake Shore Drive. It's developed with a single-family residence and some outbuildings surrounded by residential and the Whitefish Lake and zone WR1. The growth policy designation is suburban. The WR1, it does not correspond to this land use designation, but does correspond to the, the particular uses. Staff noticed adjacent landowners. We posted a sign on the property, noticed advisory agencies and placed a legal in the pilot, and we received no comments. Conditional use permits are reviewed according to the criteria in the zoning regulations. Again, the growth policy is suburban and those zoning designations are WCR, ER, and SR, where the zoning is WR1. So the underlying zoning doesn't comply with the growth policy, but it's consistent with the intent and designation for a single family with a guest house. The development proposal is consistent with the purpose and intent of the WR1 zoning, its meeting, all of the setbacks, parking, height lock coverage will also be confirmed at the time of building permit. And the subject property is suitable for the size for a guest house. There's adequate area. Again, it can meet all the emergency access standards. There's no environmental constraints. It's on the Whitefish Lake, but the lake is on the far side of this property where the guest house is going to be located. Guest houses for parking is a little different than an accessory apartment. So they have to have two parking spaces for the single-family home and then two parking spaces for the guest house. And there's adequate area on the property for that. Additionally, the first 80 feet of the driveway is required to be paved. They share a driveway with a property to kind of the northeast of it. And it's paved about halfway down, so they'll be required to pave their share of the driveway. Is served by the public services and facilities. Traffic impacts are, should be minimal. Guest houses don't have a maximum square footage, but it is smaller than the primary house. It does have to meet the primary setbacks because it's greater than 600 square feet. And the neighborhood is primarily a single-family with a few guest houses in that neighborhood. So, planning board held a public hearing on September 17th, and there was no one there to speak on the matter. And we didn't get any public comments there either. And the planning board unanimously recommended approval with the conditions in the staff report. Just some of those highlights. Again, two parking spaces need to be designated for the guest house and two for the primary residence. All driveways and parking areas. A deed restriction for guest houses, just like you do for the accessory apartments.
Mr. Mayor, I was unable to hear the last of what Wendy was saying. She, she just kind of faded out on us.
Likewise, Wendy, you blanked out for about 30 seconds there.
Um, probably just the last condition of approval, that they have to get a deed restriction similar to an accessory apartment. But unlike an accessory apartment, it has to be, it can't be rented at all. So that's what the deed restriction will state.
Okay. Is the guest house on sewer?
It will be, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Wendy on her staff report?
I do have one. Wendy, is the only distinction between an accessory dwelling unit and a guest house, the ability to rent it? Is there any other distinctions?
The guest houses can be bigger than 600 square feet. That's the limitation on size for accessory apartments. We often see them for folks around the lake, grew up at Aron Horse. You don't usually see a guest house in town.
But there is no maximum size requirement, other than just not being larger than the other house?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for Wendy? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on item 6B of the agenda, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it back to Chris to manage any public comment. Thank you, Chris.
Okay. We do have two hands raised. I'm not sure if they're for this one or not, but I will go ahead and ask them. Flowers, you're unmuted. Did you have a comment? Okay, no comment. And I see Richard has got his hand raised. Richard, do you have a comment to make on this one?
I, I do. Thank you. Um, mayor and counselors, thank you once again. Richard Hildner, 104 Fifth Street. And I hope that this is also an opportunity as one of the conditions to make sure that they provide bear-resistant trash, trash receptacles.
It's for your comment, Richard. Further public comment, Chris?
I am not seeing any other hands raised at this time.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on item 6B and turn it back to the council for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, subject to some discussion, I would move to approve WCUP 20-14, the findings of fact and the staff report, and six conditions of approval as recommended by the Whitefish Planning Board on September 17th, 2020. With the exception, I would like to know whether or not we can add a condition that requires the bear-resistant receptacles to be used at this site as a result of this request for a conditional use.
Thanks, Frank. Let's get a second to the motion first, then we can consider amendments. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Quinell. Frank, I'll turn it back to you.
My question remains, is there, Dave, or Wendy, can we, can we in fact add a condition of approval that they must install bear-resistant or have bear-resistant receptacles on this site?
I mean, I think the council can put any condition on there they want. I mean, I would defer to Craig on what the requirements are through Public Works for trash collection and where we require those kind of containers and if they're available, but not, the council can put any condition on that you want to.
Isn't the trash ordinance have hours and limitations for garbage and inside the garage is considered bear resistant?
It does. And Wendy, I would just defer to Dana because she's been, well, we've both been in negotiations with Republic, but I think if it's, if bear resistant is not available, then we probably can't condition their their development on being bear resistant, so.
Yeah, my, my question, if I could interrupt, sorry, is if Republic is servicing this area, they don't currently have anybody that can service a bear resistant can. So I don't think we could, I get, I appreciate and respect the point being made. I don't know if it's feasible at this time.
So, I'm sorry. This is Dana. Obviously, I, the, right now, Republic can provide bear-resistant containers to single-family homes that have a 90-gallon container. One of the challenges is though, our code does allow for individuals, they have to be able to keep their containers in a secured location. So should they keep it within their residence in the garage? That would be as secure as the, the rollout. Concerns when it comes to guest homes, obviously, is that if you have somebody who stays with you and then leaves, they might leave the trash out too early or not within compliance with their code. So I could see a benefit there. Because this, this is a little bit different than a regular short-term rental, though, where you have, you know, people coming and staying and leaving. Obviously, the, this is with the resident's house there. So it is possible for a 90-gallon container. The cost is about double right now, based on the proposal we received from Republic. So there is a cost associated with that per month.
Dana, did you, did I hear you say that the cost of the container itself is twice as much, or is it the service is twice as much?
It's the monthly service. They don't pay for the container. The cost of the container is built into the monthly payment. So the monthly payment for an individual would be close to double for having service year round.
Further questions or comments?
This is Craig. I, I was just going to mention, this isn't a typical subdivision or PUD or even conditional use where we would necessarily specify a garbage or refuse container. The existing house and the new guest house could easily have individual rollout carts where they could keep them, I would say in the garage or in an enclosed space where a bear-resistant container wouldn't necessarily be required. It's typically in the you know, conditional use permits or, you know, apartment type complexes where, where we'd require bear-proof containers that are, you know, outside 24/7.
Is it clear? Or do we need to make it clear that they shall provide indoor space and be required to keep trash indoors unless they provide or have bear-resistant containers?
I believe our city code is clear in that requirement for all residences inside city limits. And our officers do go around and ticket, you know, put warnings or ticket households that have left their containers out unsecured.
Query, does it serve us, does it serve us to identify that as a condition of approval? To make it clear to the homeowner that this is a condition of approval as well as the city ordinance?
I don't see a problem with adding it, I guess. Sorry, Angie. I don't see a problem with adding it. It's just, you know, mimicking our city code at this point.
Yeah, Frank, I never see a problem with adding that as a condition. I mean, it's easy enough.
I would, I would move to amend my motion to add a condition requiring that we identify for the, that the homeowner be identified or be required to provide and keep all trash indoors and in enclosed space unless they provide bear-resistant containers.
This will be a friendly amendment. Is there? No, seconded by Counselor Quinell. Further discussion on the amendment, which will be, Michelle, if you can, for the record, what condition number would this be?
Number seven.
So it's added condition number seven. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise, or excuse me, Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Davis? Counselor Hennan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Can we come back to Counselor Davis? I didn't, we didn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. The friendly amendment, which will be condition number seven, approved, which brings us back to the original motion. Are there further comments? Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Davis? Counselor Hennan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. And item 6B does pass unanimously with added condition number seven, which brings us to item 6C of our agenda, which is consideration of a request from Jake Carter for a conditional use permit to construct a commercial parking lot list associated with the professional office at 307 Spokane Avenue. And the property is zone WR4, which is our high-density multifamily residential district, and this is WCUP 20-13.
Good evening. So this is on page 156 of your packet. Good evening. So this is on page 156 of your packet. As John mentioned, yeah, this is a conditional use permit request to add a commercial parking lot onto four lots that exist onto Kalispel Avenue to be used as accessory private parking for the adjacent professional office building at 307 Spokane Avenue. And the property is zoned or WR4 multifamily residential, which is our highest density residential district. In that district, it requires a conditional use permit for professional offices for uses that are adjacent to Spokane Avenue. And then we also have a section of our code that allows in the R4 zone, it allows off street parking for non residential uses up to 300 feet away from the proposed lot. So it is a allowed use under zoning, at least according, when we just went through the city council before, on a previous attempt where the entire thing was going to be a parking lot without any residential associated with it. The city attorney at the time agreed that it was a legal thing to request. So currently, the site has a small house and a detached garage. It's the former parsonage for the Whitefish Four Square Church that used to be on Spokane Avenue. That was built in 1935 and it was, you know, that back area was a paved parking lot for the rectory and they used to do their youth meetings in that garage. I know because I went to one once upon a time when I was really young. So that particular back area of that property has been being used as a parking lot for many, many years. And then after that church, they sold their church building and they built, they actually bought the Lutheran church building. And then the owners of that 307 Spokane purchased those properties after that, and it's kind of been used, still used off and on as parking for some of the tenants in that 307 Spokane. So what they're proposing to do is modify the property lines of those four lots so that the back portion of it, basically splitting it into the opposite ways, so the back portion of it becomes a separate lot. And then the front portion is going to be enabled to be a townhome, which are proposing to do two units on there rather than the eight units that could be built under the current zoning without any conditional use permit. It could be six townhome units or eight condos or apartments on those lots. So they're looking at expanding that existing parking area, repaving it, landscaping it, and then they're going to block off the, there's a existing curb cut on Kalispel, actually two existing curb cuts that allow access through those lots to the alley. Those would be blocked off and the only access would be through that, that alley. They're looking at putting a six foot privacy fence around the parking lot so you wouldn't be able to see that outside of the alley and the existing, or the proposed townhouse that they're going to build would block it from view from Kalispel Avenue. As I mentioned, they had requested one, a similar request back in 2012. That did not include any residential on the site and it was a parking lot all the way to Spokane. And while the planning board recommended approval, the city council denied that at that time. So again, those four lots are about 0.4 acres, about 13,400 square feet. It's currently across the alley is B3, and then on the other side of Kalispel Avenue is our WR2 zoning. So that whole block is our R4, which is our, again, our highest density residential use. The growth policy designation of that is high density residential. We did send out a public notice to, within 300 feet. We had, at the time of the planning board meeting, prior to the, at least the publication of our staff report, we had seven comments. But a few more comments came in prior to that meeting and then there's a bunch of comments that aren't in your back of it. I think that Michelle forwarded to you today and she has something that she may read into the record as well. So looking at the findings of fact and the review of this, again, looking at the growth policy, it does call this out as high density residential. The fact, you know, there are lots of areas that are high density residential that do have some commercial uses on them around the community. And then they are looking at adding those two residential townhomes on the lot facing Kalispel Avenue in order to fit in with the neighborhood and fit in with the WR4 zoning residential use. As I mentioned, with as far as the zoning goes, with the high density residential, it could build eight units on there, on those four lots. I do two fourplexes, or they could reconfigure that into townhomes, which they could get up to six. So some of the concerns that we heard, you know, from the neighbors were that it would change some of the character of what is currently residential block. Possibly could set a precedent in that area for a more commercial creep. I think this is a pretty unusual situation in that it has been a parking lot. It was a non residential use in the back part of that for many years. The front part being the parsonage was residential. But a church would require a conditional use permit. That was grandfathered in because it was their, they used that for many, many decades as part of their church facility. Again, zoning regulations don't mention parking lots as a specific use. There's nowhere in the code where it lists parking lots. They're always an accessory used to something else. And again, the code does allow an accessory parking lot for a non residential use within 300 feet. So this does meet those requirements in the R4. The residential zone is the only zone that does allow parking off site. So as far as access goes, again, it's going to be accessed off of the alley. It's an existing 16 foot alley. And there's a utility pole in the alley that will need to be relocated to provide the access. Previously, when they came, I don't know if it's the same applicant, but when it was looked at as a parking lot before, the previous public works director recommended the alley be changed to a one way alley. I talked to Craig about that. He didn't seem as concerned, but if it does become a problem, that they could change that to a one way alley. So we did put a condition of approval in there that if it becomes an issue that the applicant would work with the city to change that alley into a one way. As far as the size of the site seems to be adequate and suitable for the proposed use. With regard to the, the existing commercial building at 307 Spokane, it is in the B3 zone there and that does not have a parking requirement. When that was built, they only had 10 existing spaces on that lot. You know, if it was going to meet our parking requirement based on the square footage, they would have needed 19 parking spaces for that use. So this proposal is proposing to build additional 18, so they'd have 28 total. Currently, there's a few people that do park in the back of that and then the rest of the people all park on the public streets around there on Kalispel Avenue and on Third and Fourth Streets. So they would be removing those curb cuts on Kalispel and then repairing the sidewalk. And then we also put a condition on there that they would repair the sidewalks with new curb and gutter and replace the additional street trees along there to improve that. The site plan does have room for snow removal and while they haven't submitted a formal landscaping plan, it does look like there's adequate room on there to meet our buffering and landscaping requirements. Again, as I mentioned, they're looking at putting a six foot high privacy fence on the north and south property lines for screening. Again, 8% of the lot needs to be covered with landscaping. And then a minimum of a five foot high side screen, screen on the side yard, which that fence would accommodate, as well as additional landscaping. Utilities are available on the site and the existing utilities, you know, for the existing building. So if they do build a townhome on there, then they'd have existing sewer water as well as all of the other utilities. Because they're removing the access off of Kalispel Avenue, it is going to reduce traffic, potential traffic on Kalispel Avenue, although would it obviously increase some traffic into that alleyway with its parking lot. Should be noted that if, you know, if they aren't able to do the commercial conditional use permit, if it is, you know, if they maximize that site with, you know, eight condo units, they'd have at least 16 parking spaces in the back of there anyway as a requirement. So there might end up being parking in there anyway, which would be a use by right and would not need a conditional use permit as they develop that. But then the eight, those 18 cars that would be associated with the 307 Spokane would have to park on the street as well. As far as any impact of noise or light, I think that the the townhome in the front of there would be blocking headlights on the adjacent neighborhood as well as this six foot high fence, typically because it's a special office use. Traffic would be somewhere between 7:30 and 5:30 PM that would accommodate that parking lot. As opposed to if it was residential, you know, cars come and go at all hours. Looking at the neighborhood compatibility, the removal of that existing small house, maybe it submits some drawings that show what, you know, what the townhomes might look like. Be definitely a little bit bigger than that existing house, but not necessarily out of scale with other houses in that neighborhood or other adjacent neighborhoods. Because it's a townhome, it would go to architectural review, so it'd be further looked at for bulk and scale. So that sums it up. You know, Steph, in looking at this, there are, you know, obviously there's some concern about impacts to the neighborhood with any kind of commercial use that goes in there. You know, we've kind of looked at the pros and cons and because of, you know, some of the the pros, we felt like it was definitely a good compromise. The, looked like the applicant went out to the neighborhood and got feedback from people and they didn't, you know, some of the neighbors they talked to didn't want to see a big, you know, multi family building on that site and we're happy with the idea of a, just, you know, two units on there. And so that's the proposal that they came back with, you know, sort of compromise so they could get some additional parking as well as, you know, keep that particular area somewhat looking residential and fitting in with the context of the neighborhood. Well, that is the summary. This did go to the planning board on September 17th. During the public hearing, there's nine people from the public spoke, as well as applicant and the representative. Quite a few people opposed the project from the public. There was one person in support of it. And the planning board reviewed all that and then they voted to recommend denial of the project 4 to 1. And that's where it's at with you guys. If you have any questions, I would be glad to try to answer them for you.
Thank you, Dave. We'll start with Ben. Any questions for Dave on staff's report?
Yeah, just one. Just to make sure I have this clear in my head, Dave. How is this a legal request or legal use? Again, just to make sure I understand.
So there's, there's several properties around town that might be on multiple lots. And this multiple ownership, in this circumstance, like for instance, our first national bank, it used to be Mountain Bank across Spokane, they have an accessory parking lot on a separate lot. That was in the same zoning. So because the primary use fronts on Kalispel Avenue, we don't look at parking lots as anything but an accessory. That parking lot would be considered an accessory use because it's under the same ownership and it would be signed to only be used by the tenants of that 307 Spokane. And we also have an additional section of the code in the parking chapter that allows non residential uses in a residential zone such as the R4 to be up to 300 feet away from the lot where the use is happening. So under those two items, we felt like, you know, they could come forward and ask for a conditional use based on that.
Is there any other examples of parking lots, like commercial parking lots in R4 districts that you can think of?
Like I said, right across the Spokane, First Interstate Bank, they have a parking lot that they built that's across the street from their facility on a separate lot that's accessory to their use that the city permitted back in the day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Rebecca, any questions?
I, I just, I've been, I live, I mean, I work about a block away. And so I did go to the informational meeting because I was noticed as a interested party. So I've been kind of observing the area. I, I guess I have two questions. Is it really legal to use that's current space as a parking lot right now? Because it is used every day by seven different cars that park in there. I mean, I understood when it was a church, but it seems like, was it ever grandfathered in and is it a legal use now? And the second thing is that power pole is right, like smack dab in the middle of the other two. I don't know where they could move it without moving all of them. So have you, is he, have you talked about the applicant, with the applicant about that?
Um, yeah, I mean, that was, again, I didn't, I forgot to go through the conditions of approval. It's one of the things I've did not do when I was, I'm giving you a report. But one of the things, I mean, they have talked to the power company about moving it and what it would cost. And they're, they're moving it. I don't know if that's going to require them to move other power poles along there, but they're, you know, they would have to figure out all that out with, with the power company. And so we put a condition on there that they, you know, move that to accommodate traffic.
What about the other question I had about the historic use?
So, that's a kind of a, an interesting legal question. You know, it was being used as a parking lot. I don't know if there was a point of time between when the church sold it, that it wasn't used as a parking lot. However, we have, you know, we've received complaints about people parking there and we've talked to them about it and one of their you know, responses to try to alleviate that, you know, from the city's concern was to try to make it legitimate parking lot and then meet, you know, it's just pavement in there. There's no landscaping whatsoever. So if they were to bring that up and make it legitimate, then they would be required to meet our landscaping requirements and beautify it and make it a lot nicer than it is right now.
But is it, I mean, if anybody else has a, whoops, sorry. If anybody else has a house along that street now, because it's, that's the other thing that's confusing. It, it's WR2 on the east side and then WR4 on the north and south and W3 on the west. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so W2 isn't allowed to have a parking lot in the back of their property, correct?
Yeah, it would not be allowed to have a parking lot as a, as a, as a use. But again, because that the principal use fronts on Spokane and in that type of use, professional office is a permitted use in the R4 with a conditional use. And again, there's other provision that allows parking within 300 feet for non residential uses in the R4 zone.
Yeah.
So all, all of those things come together. That's, I mean, but again, it's a process. So looking at it, well, what is the problem, you know, we couldn't just say, yeah, you can do that there. You have to go through a process, which is why we're having a public hearing and it allows the council to have the discretion to determine that, you know, is this acceptable or is it something that's going to have too much impact on the neighborhood? Or is it a solution that provides some relief to, you know, the parking on the street by, you know, taking some of those cars off the street and allowing them existing business to, you know, have additional parking.
I guess my question, Dave, is it's not a legal parking lot currently? Because the buildings that face Kalispel are where that property belongs to, correct? So they're not legally allowed to have a parking lot currently?
I think that's true, other than, I mean, there are some grandfathering clauses if it's been maintained as a, as a parking lot. I mean, it was a parking lot for many, many years for the church. That's where, you know, what they didn't have any other parking for their building. It's just down the street and then they, so the people that went to church, they're parked there every Sunday and then they also had meetings on Wednesdays and et cetera. That was their parking lot. And I don't know if that would be considered the continuation of a, of a grandfathered use or because it was used residentially after that. If that went away, but we looked at it like it wasn't allowed and so we pursued it as as a violation because it was a residential use. But if they could, you know, if they could prove that it was continually used as a non conforming use, then they might have a case to say that it's grandfathered.
So you, you actually have fielded questions from the neighbors about this being an illegal parking lot previously? And then what happened with those?
We sent letters to them, you know, telling them to stop using it as a parking lot and they came, came in and tried to figure out a solution that would, you know, work for everybody, which is why they went out and talked to the neighbors and everything.
Okay, so then, so that's what kind of started. Okay. So then, so that's what kind of started this. And then the, the other question I had is on the south side of this property. That is also facing Kalispell. So that's W two. But you're saying it's W four.
So the south side of the property is W R four. All the houses on that side of the street on Kalispell are W R four. That block across, across Kalispell Avenue is W R two.
Oh, okay. I see. So is that like, if you go down another block, is it W R four as well?
I'm not sure. At what point I'd have to open the zoning map to see where it changes from one to the other, but.
So there would be nothing to preclude like buying the adjacent property and then expanding the parking lot if this was approved because of precedent that we had set. They would have a legal reason to be able to do that by right.
They, you'd still have to come in for a conditional use permit, but yeah, it is, all that block is our four all the way down to six three. But I mean, again, this is a unique situation where again, there were, you know, there's nowhere else along there where this property had an existing parking lot on there. But I don't think, you know, I don't think it would set a precedent where the council would have to keep allowing it to expand. I mean, this is a pretty, pretty unique situation. But every, you know, if they did want to expand it, they'd have to come back for another conditional use permit.
But also it would, if someone else that had a W, W R four zoning, they could sue us if we set a precedent with this.
Conditional use permits looked at on its own merits. So this one has a unique situation where there was existing parking there. I don't think there's any other situation like that along there. So I don't personally believe it would set a precedent. I mean, the council can you know, there's lots of conditional use permits that get denied with it, you know, similar ones have been approved, but there was some unique circumstance in there.
If you don't mind if I step in, Rebecca, yeah, initially permits are reviewed on and you know, it's, it's a weird situation. I live like a block and a half from there. So I understand your concerns with the situation. But I think that, you know, there's I don't think that it necessarily doesn't meet our criteria for additional use.
Okay. Thank you, Angie. Thanks, Dave. That's all I have for now.
Thanks, Rebecca. Andy, questions or comments?
Uh, no questions this time.
Thank you, Andy. Frank?
I guess I heard what Dave was saying. My concern really is that I think it does maybe not set a precedent, but it would certainly put significant pressure on the remainder of lots on that block that are adjacent to the, to the uses on Spokane. Those owners may try to pressure them to sell, raise property rates. Our property costs over there and further reduce as a result of that. Our opportunity for affordable housing in our, in our downtown area. And I just, I, I, I don't see how this works for the neighborhood or what our goals are. Yeah, it helps the developer, but I'm not sure it does much else.
Thanks, Frank. Ryan?
No, no questions for me at this time.
Thank you, Ryan. And finally, Steve.
Hey, Dave, a couple of questions for you. First one, do you, do you have a record of when First Interstate Bank got their approval to make that parking lot? That's a on the same property as where they are.
Yeah, it was done under the Tri-City Planning Office. I'm not sure exactly what year I did talk to at the time of the previous, the middle, I talked to Eric Mulcahy, who was this Whitefish City Planner at the time. And they actually allowed them to do it as a use by right without requiring a conditional use permit, which I
Okay, so that was early two
Zoning administrator disagreed with that interpretation, but that's, I was approved previously.
Okay, that was like early two thousands at the latest.
Probably, yeah.
The other question I have is if they develop this lot to the full potential. The parking they'd have to have a certain number of parking spaces, correct?
That's correct. So if they did eight units, depending on how many bedrooms, because multifamily has different standards based on the bedrooms, but it could have up to eighteen to twenty parking spaces required.
Okay, but based on, and based on that and our current zoning regulations, would they be allowed to put these all in one parking lot on, on the alley?
Yeah, they would probably do the, a very similar type of a parking situation. They, I don't know how they're going to fit that many in there. I mean, the number of units is going to be based on how many spaces they can fit in there. But so if they do bigger buildings, there's going to be less room for parking. But that's, they could do underground, you know, under parking or garages. You know, they could access it off Kalispell rather than this situation where they're accessing it from the alley.
Those, those parking spaces would be reserved for the residents of those buildings.
Yep, exactly. And so, yeah, there wouldn't be any room, obviously, for the three oh seven Spokane. Those people would have to park out on the streets and
And then can you refresh my memory about what our current parking situation is? Aren't we looking at some sort of parking permit or we approve some parking permit system for that area?
You know, I probably defer to Craig on that, on the parking thing. I think we're looking at trying to identify neighborhoods where, you know, some of the employees downtown can park. I don't know that we're going to do a residential permitting program, but that's something that, you know, we have looked at in some of the areas like in
Signs up by the high school that say daytime residential parking only. Is this in that type of zone? I mean, it's pretty close to the middle school. Craig, do you know the answer to that question?
Uh, this is not in that zone. Uh, we do have a recently approved temporary on-street parking permit program for the downtown area for areas that are two hour or three hour parking, you know, and then we obviously have the the alternate side parking for snow removal, but this would not fall into any of the other existing parking zones. And I don't know, you know, we have a parking committee that we're in the process of finalizing. I think we have a few more interviews and then there'll be a whole potential series of recommendations that come out of that committee, but I don't know of any residential parking zones that we've been discussing.
I will absolutely interrupt Craig. Sorry. Sorry, Craig. Sorry. But we actually looked at a parking permit as part of our parking plan revisions last spring or I think it was last summer. And we just decided that we would forego it for another year and study frankly, just not do it at this point. But I think we are looking at a parking permit and we'll figure it out next year, maybe hopefully if we're all okay.
The parking permit program that we are considering, the lot that we, we're going to start with will be Third and Central. So while not too far from this location, if we were to use that lot for a, an employee parking permit program, that you would still have to cross Spokane. And that is a challenging intersection of Third and Spokane.
Okay. It seems like this whole parking issue was one of the things that really got interrupted by the COVID thing. This was an area of concern from my, from what I recall in that area, the Kalispell and whatever next street over to the east is. Okay, I think those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. If there's nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and call the public hearing for item six C of our agenda, and I'll turn it back to Chris to manage our public comment tonight. Thanks, Chris.
And I, I will say we have had a couple of people that have had issues. So again, if anybody is calling in on the telephone only, use star three to raise your hand and then star three to lower your hand. And I will start down the list. Richard, I think, was the first one that had his hand raised, so.
Maybe the applicant may want a chance to speak first, and I believe Jake Carter is on.
Yes, he is.
Thank you.
First shot. Jake, you're unmuted.
Excellent. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Councilors, and echo comments. I heard way back at early seven o'clock. Thank you for everything that you, your whole team is doing for these challenging times. Appreciate everything that you do. I, gosh, I had this really long list of things I was going to open with. And a lot of the great things I think have already been said and voiced. And so I guess a little off the cuff here. You know, I, one comment I heard was that the, we weren't sure if this was the original applicant of that original parking lot. And just to clarify, it's not. So the quick history would be is that the, the current owners purchased this building in two thousand fifteen. And I'm actually the newest member to that group. I'm only a couple, couple of years old in that group now. And I think when I jumped in, the, the talks were sort of happening to re, to recircle around to this, uh, this concept that you see here on the C O P. And and so we just really started hitting it home. And I'm also, I'm also one of the main tenants. I'm a business owner of one of the main tenants in this building. And so it's obviously is something that I have a vested interest in, but it's also something that I've been, I feel as if I've taken a really just, I, I, I'm trying to look at it from everyone's perspective, and I try to say that as modestly as possible. I'm, I'm really begging to just be neighborly. And so I did go out and, you know, as soon as I hear we're going to do this type of a project, I mean, my first thought is, well, what, what do the people think across the street? And I was welcomed in an interesting fashion, you know, as soon as I tell them what I'm doing and who I am. As soon as they found out I'm part owner in that building, I think, I think the previous owner, maybe people didn't agree with a lot of their views. And so there was a lot of hesitation to really even talk about it. But then as soon as we started opening up the conversations, you know, I, I tried to explain what we were doing. And obviously, he, no one wants change. I, I, I get that. Totally. I mean, that's, you know, I totally understand that. The reality is though, I think, I think the fact that we have a four-city lot comp here, there's going to be change. And so I tried to phrase that in such a way as, okay, here's what we can do. And as everyone kind of knows, we can go six, seven, eight units in there. I'm, I'm an accountant, and so I really like the yield of that, of that profit there. But I'm also kind of a realist in terms of, okay, what is, what do we truly need? And that's, and that's parking, but you know, we can't do the full lot, nor would we maybe want to do the full thing as, as asphalt. So, and we want to help the neighbors or do what we can to be as little of a burden as we can to the neighbors. Because doing probably nothing is the best thing to not burn anybody. But we, we are in this to, you know, move this project forward. And so reaching out to the neighbors. No one, no one wants the multi, the huge multifamily complex. Everyone, and I hate to speak for all those neighbors, but I'm trying to share with you what I feel is a representation. And that was everyone pointed one hundred yards down to the north and said, we don't necessarily want big, huge. And I said, okay, great. But, and so the, the reality too is that we might not necessarily just fix up the one home that's on there. It's, it's uninhabitable. We've been questioned that and told that it's probably our fault for being that way. Verdicts out on that. I think, I think that thing has not been maintained for quite some time. So we're kind of left with this problem child of a house here. And so yeah, we could fix it up. I penciling the numbers on that and getting the bids, I mean, it just doesn't make sense. So that's the reality there. So it's okay, what's the next least invasive? And we maybe get some parking out of it. And that's what you see before you. And so back to talking with neighbors, you know, it, it's very difficult to come with something that everyone was jumping up and down with. But we truly, truly felt this was the what I would think the give and take. Now, we've had a lot of people and I've been reading a lot about how this is a commercial burden pushed onto residential. I'll be the first one. Everyone back in my partner group will probably say, what are you saying this for, Jake? But truly, I, I almost feel that same way too. But the reality is, if we don't do this project, our group is, you know, a bunch of professionals. We might not want to tackle a huge commercial project, so we might let the next person do it. Throwing on four city lots to sell, I, I would imagine I could guess who might buy that. Not saying we will, but I mean, then we have to weigh that option based on the decision that the city council, you folks, give to us. So it's either that or what we just, again, we feel as if this is kind of a blend of the least of what we think are all the evils. So I guess that's, that's just kind of, I guess, from my perspective of what I attempted to do with the neighbors. I guess, uh, uh, an off, a topic that was talked about a lot was in regards to the traffic. In my mind, this proposal, the, all the traffic to three oh seven, the commercial building is going to happen no matter what. So to, to maybe, I've heard people say, well, it's going to increase traffic. The increased traffic will be, one, the two new, the two units, so the homes that live in those, or the people that live in those two homes. And then two, I cannot dispute the fact that there's going to be more alleyway traffic. Cannot dispute that. We're going to be, I was sitting out there all this past, this last week. Kind of when I got done at five or six o'clock, watching coworkers leave, not even telling them what I was doing. And I could see there was a pretty good flow going out to Kalispell Avenue. Just, that's kind of almost an easy way to get out. And so I, I think unquestionably, this, this gives a ton of traffic off of that block of Kalispell. And our, our, our neighbors, Molly, Sarah, Shane, other people I've talked with that live on that alley have a very great point that that alley traffic is going to increase. Is it a one-way solution? I don't know. I pull in on the north side of that alley and leave on the north side of that alley. But that's me. I can, I can share that with other people. We have a lot of great people that work here that actually care. They would probably respect that as well. I keep, it's not going to solve it, but that's, that's our attempt at trying here. Signage, we could have signage on both sides of the alley. So as soon as you're hitting that alley, can we direct people north? I'm up for it. Yes. Because we care. We want, we don't want that burden pushed down to our neighbors. So we're, we're open to all of that. And I hope that kind of demonstrates what we've been trying to do. Again, you know, it's, it's, I hate to say it, but I think there will be change on those lots. And we feel that this is a way to cohabitate with our neighbors. Solving, hopefully solving some parking. Sounds like we have parking issues in the town. And, and hopefully creating some new homes. It's not the, the the eight-family home going in there. But quite frankly, you asked the neighbors, I don't think they want that, the direct neighbors. But, uh, so that's why we kind of felt this was right, right in the middle, right in the middle. And so I think with that, I'm, I'm very open. I'm not sure if it's a Q and A for me. I, I, I would love to feel any questions that people might have. But I think that's about it from, from our, our standpoint. And again, thank you. Thank you all.
Any questions for Mr. Carter from the council?
I have a question. This is Rebecca. Okay, what's your plan for moving the power pole? That's my first one. And then the second one is how did you resolve this issue when the city informed you that you were parking there illegally?
Sure. I, I can honestly say I have not personally contacted the, the electric company. However, I've been informed by some of the folks that we've hired to assist in this project that there has been communication and that, that it could be moved. It's definitely in the application. Obviously, it's in the application to have that addressed. And so that clearly is going to be an item that, that would, that would need to happen. It's noted on Dave's, it looks like right there, he's got it up on the screen. I mean, the power pole is located, kind of, it's on that east side of the alley. And so kind of smack dab in the middle of, of the, it's kind of right on the side there. So I'm, I'm certainly not an expert in where a power pole location should be. But I would imagine there's one, there's one super tight just on to the neighbor to the north, kind of right there on that lot. And then there's one to the south, kind of halfway down between the next two neighbors. And so if we are, I would imagine, depending on the distance between the two, we're going to either have to insert two new poles, which would of course be at our expense. And I guess I would, I would leave it at that. So very candidly, Rebecca, I've not spoken directly with them, but it's definitely just an action item as we get further down this process. And your other question and comment on parking there? As soon as we were, and have been notified by the city, we put up signage for, for residential parking only. And I would be lying to you if that's what's going on, as in no parking, because we're parking there. Right, right in front of those signs. And, and I, I mean bluntly, I think it's kind of, it's one of those things where until someone slaps you on the hand, I'm not saying this is right. Hopefully, no one's constraining this is, is what I believe in. But if people park there and nothing happens, it's kind of, it's interesting how that sign just isn't there. And so I guess I would put it on the administer of that parking signage to have ticketed those cars. And with that not happening, I guess we would say the parking, the people that park there interpret that as, I guess it's okay to park there.
Well, because it looks like it's always the same people every day that are parking in the same spots, kind of. So I figured it was staff, but, okay.
I would, I mean, it's definitely, it's definitely tenants. You got it in the park, in the, in the area. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Carter. Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on this agenda item. We hold the public hearing now, and I'll turn it back to Chris for public comments.
Okay, so I will start with Richard. You're unmuted.
Oh, thank you, Chris. Mr. Mayor and members of council. I, in, in the packet, you have the write-up from John Ellis with regards to this CUP 20-13. And I agree with everything he says in it, as I have indicated in my comments to the planning board. I do think that this will create further creep into the neighborhood. The other thing that befuddles me is I don't believe you should even be considering a commercial parking lot in the WR4. It's just an antithesis of what we're trying to do, or the city has, at least in the past, been trying to do. I noticed in Mr. Carter's, or listening to Mr. Carter this evening, that he did reach out to the neighbors. However, the comments in the packet for the planning board pretty much shows that they appreciated the outreach, but they still oppose the project. I'm also worried whenever a developer or someone with a project uses, I could make it worse, those kinds of threats. And I don't think that those are conducive to a good way of conducting business. As far as the parking goes, Mr. Carter just said, and, and my mother always told me, just because everybody else is doing it, doesn't make it right in terms of parking where it says you shouldn't be parking and having to wait until somebody puts a ticket on your car. And finally, I, the, in the comments at the planning board, Mr. Carter noted that the parking garage would provide a suitable alternative perhaps for parking, but it's a quarter of a mile away. Now, a quarter of a mile might sound like a long distance. On the other hand, a quarter of a mile is one lap around the track at the high school. And I suspect that the majority of folks wanting to park in this proposed parking lot could probably also walk one time around the track to get to work. So I encourage you and implore you actually to uphold the decision of the planning board and deny CUP 20-13. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Did I give my address?
No.
Sorry.
I think we can find it, Richard.
Okay, just in case, 104 Fifth Street.
Our next in line was Mr. John Ellis. You're unmuted now.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. The most important thing I would like for you to hear from me tonight is read the Whitefish City Code for yourself. Because if you do that, you will see that the planning department is incorrect in this being an authorized use. Section 11-2I-2 tells you what a permitted use in a WR4 is. No parking lots are mentioned there. Section 11-2I-3 has the conditional uses. No parking lots are allowed there. Section 116-31C, or 11C, excuse me, I'm sorry, 1C. This is what Mr. Taylor has just talked to you about parking is allowed, but listen to what it says. Residential parking spaces shall be on the same lot with the main building. Parking for non-residential uses may be located up to 300 feet from the property. So parking for residences and parking for commercial uses are different, but nowhere in this section does it say that a commercial building in a WB3 zone can invade a WR4 zone for its own parking. And lastly, the section that's important is 119-2C, which defines what an accessory use is. And it has many things in it, but the most important language is in the last section of it, which says that the accessory use has to be located on the same lot with the main building. And again, we're not, we're jumping an alley onto a different lot. Many people have talked about the First Interstate Building. Remember that in a WR4, it specifically says on Spokane Avenue, it can be allowed. So again, what happens on Spokane Avenue with professional offices is not the same what is what happens in a WR4. In 2012, four of us here tonight were there. Frank was there, John was there, Melissa was there, and I was there. My memory is that Mary Van Buskirk said that this was not an authorized accessory use. If you read the transcript, you see that there was much discussion. The council was all over the place in responding to the issue brought up. However, the council voted unanimously, and I believe they voted unanimously because Ms. Van Buskirk says it wasn't an accessory use. The firebrand tried to rezone their property. That was rejected unanimously by the planning board, and now they've built six townhomes there. Yes, it's big, but it's residential, and it blocks the noise and traffic from the intersection of Second Avenue and Spokane from the neighborhood. I'll take that any day other than a parking lot. I've always, throughout these proceedings, cited to the council, to cases, and to, to the planning board, which I believe say that once you allow someone to build a parking lot, you're not going to be able to stop anybody else. Conditional use, I think they'll be able to justify more parking lots. It will change what Kalispell Avenue looks like, and it'll also change what Spokane Avenue looks like. When you talk to many people around town about this building, they all tell you that it's been engineered to have a third story. So if they put a third story of residential on there, then they have the parking in this parking lot. I would say that neither the planning department report, nor the applicant in its application have demonstrated that this complies with the growth policy. There's no, nothing that says that a parking lot should be on this WR4 area. Lastly, I would say that the burden to get a conditional use permit lies on the applicant. And I believe that the applicant has not met its burden. It's a parking lot now because the city hadn't enforced the code. That's the simple answer. Thank you very much to listen to what I have to say and what I have written in in my comments. Thanks again.
Thanks, Charles.
Okay, our next personal comment is Mary Powers. You're unmuted.
Hello, and I'll say what everyone else did. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name's Mary Drew Powers. I live at 327 Kalispell Avenue, across from the proposed development. And I've lived at this address in Whitefish for 12 years. My house was built in 1919, so it's been around 101 years. This has been a difficult decision. My first thought was that what the developers were offering was the best that we could get. They invited us into their process to an extent, and I appreciate that. And that property has been an issue for a long time, as Mr. Ellis was talking about. A parking lot was proposed in 2012 as well. Well, perhaps this development would mean we wouldn't have to worry about it anymore because we'd have residents across the street. It wouldn't be used as a parking lot facing Kalispell. And we would be spared a larger, larger housing development. That threat is always hung over our head. But my peace of mind would come at the cost of my neighbors on the other side of the street that would be adversely impacted by that development. I went to the planning meeting intending to say I was for it, but I left, and I had changed my mind after listening to people. That alley, Kalispell Alley, is skinny. The outlets on the Third and Fourth are extremely congested, and cars careen into it from Spokane, and the outlet from the firebrand is right across the alley on Third Street. The parking as planned in the development will benefit the business since it's private, but it won't do anything to alleviate parking on Kalispell. I don't mind if someone parks on, in front of my house. I expect that. But the argument that the parking lot will somehow alleviate parking on the street is just not true. The larger issue is that the zoning district boundary is in the wrong place. It's on Kalispell Avenue and should rightly be in the alley between Kalispell and Spokane. It's a mere three and a half blocks that this weird zoning exists. And my neighbors and I intend to follow this up and petition to change the zone on the west side of Kalispell Avenue to WR2 as it should be. This is a, this is the beginning of one of Whitefish's historic neighborhoods, and I think that it should stay that way. And also from the 2007 master plan, I note that Jake says in the growth policy lists that as WR4, and he's right. What he didn't say in the master plan, they know it. Whitefish has some areas where the zoning does not match the neighborhood. And then he specifically mentioned Kalispell, the west side of Kalispell Avenue. They say between Fourth and Sixth Streets. That's incorrect. It's Second and Sixth. Both of these, this area is Zone WR4, High Density Multifamily Residential, which allows densities and multifamily structures by code could be far out of scale with the surrounding neighborhood. And then it mentions that the zoning is on the street rather than the alley, which is considered better zoning. So I will just say that I'm against this change. And it was put to us that we only have these two options, but I think we have a third option, and that is to follow up and petition to get the zone changed. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay, and next we have Eric. You are unmuted.
This is Eric Mulcahy with San Surveng to Village Loop, Kalispell. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
And I was intending to speak, but so I got in the queue late, I guess. I just wanted to touch base and kind of fill in a couple of points that Jake spoke about. And, but first off, I do think that the staff, the planning staff, did a very good job in evaluating this particular project. We met with them a number of times, trying to determine, you know, whether this was a path that we could pursue. And we all read the, the regulations and respectfully disagree with some of the, the points that the people in opposition brought up. Parking is clearly an accessory use, and none of our, the zoning districts in the Whitefish zoning code lists parking as a permitted or conditionally permitted use. So we, but it does, each zoning district does refer you to the parking section of their code to address parking. And in this instance, under the WR4 zoning designation in the parking section, it brings up the section 11631C, which states that non-residential uses in the R4 can park up, have parking up to 300 feet from their property. So that's essentially the section that we're relying on. And that was the section of the code that First Interstate Bank relied on when they built on the old hospital site just south of Fourth. Same zoning, the B3 and the R4. That's not to say that that creates a precedence any more than this does. But what I would also like to state is that we knew that when this came about to the planning board and the city council back in 2012, that there was a real issue with having a parking lot fronting on Kalispell. So we didn't want to make that same mistake. So the plan was to try to make the best of, of. One is provided much-needed parking to the downtown and also provide much-needed housing to the city of Whitefish. So the proposal was to essentially split the property east-west instead of the north-south and create two residential units on the front. So if you're driving down Kalispell or walking down the sidewalk, you would essentially get that, that scale of a single-family neighborhood that's predominantly on the site. And we designed our building to mimic that single-family stature. And then we would use landscaping and fencing to block off that parking lot in the rear of the lot from the neighbors to the north-south and to the east. So that was our intent, is to try to, you know, create a benefit that would help the business and also help the neighbor, neighborhood. These four lots are ultimately going to get redeveloped one way or another. And we thought that this was a, a good way. We wouldn't maximize the density, but we were trying to maximize the solution to address two issues. And so with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, we have one more, and then Jake had asked to make a, one additional comment after this next person. Okay, we have one more, and then Jake had asked to make one additional comment after this next person. Sarah, you're unmuted now if you'd like to speak.
Hello, can people hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Sarah Kanapa. I live at 336 Kalispell Avenue, two lots away from the proposed development. I'd like to go on to the record as opposed to the proposal. It appeared in the packet that was given to the council. My previous comments were characterized differently. I do appreciate Jake's efforts at outreach to the neighborhood, but there are some concerns that were not addressed. Jake addressed one of them tonight about the traffic in the alleyway. The traffic in the alleyway is quite busy primarily because of the commercial traffic traveling through there. Our house has off-street parking, and it's become quite dangerous accessing our property. And it's not just the traffic in the alleyway, but as the parking builds up on both Third and Fourth, it's very, very difficult to get out of that alleyway. So I don't actually see one-way traffic in the alleyway as a reasonable solution unless there's some way to address the on-street parking on Third or Fourth. It's just become a lot of blind passageways that are quite busy these days. And the second concern that we have that Jake's been unable to address is the precedent. We bought our house in the historic residential neighborhood because we wanted to be part of a residential neighborhood. We always knew we were adjacent to commercial, but Kalispell still feels like a residential neighborhood, and the commercial parking lot would be the first intrusion into that. I appreciate the accommodations they've made, but it doesn't change the fact that it is a commercial intrusion into Kalispell Avenue. And as my neighbor Mary mentioned, we've been asking questions and trying to better understand what would be involved in filing a petition to change our zoning so that we were zoned in a similar manner to our neighbors across the street. So with that, I will conclude and say although I appreciate Jake Carter's efforts, we are opposed to the current proposal. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
And if I can, Jake, I missed Rhonda Fitzgerald. Let me have her make a comment, and you're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Yeah, I wasn't, I thought maybe my hand wasn't showing, so I tried to call in as well. But hopefully I won't have any feedback because I have two speakers going now. Sorry. Counsel, thank you very much. I did attend the planning board meeting, and I made extensive comments, which were in your packet. And I think the most important point that I'd like to reiterate is that we do have a growth policy that clearly tells us that there are some neighborhoods that are really zoned incorrectly and specifically call out this neighborhood as one that has zoning that is not consistent with the actual use. So I was very happy to hear Mary Drew say that the neighborhood is going to pursue correcting that oversight because it's really important that we honor our traditional historic neighborhoods. They are incredibly valuable to the fabric of our community, and they are very much at risk. I said this in planning board comments, but I wanted to reiterate it because it is up to you to see that we do not erode that, that fabric and, and damage the future of the community because people want to live in those neighborhoods. And because they're close in, they're always on the edge of the commercial neighborhoods that want to encroach upon them. You know, we rely on the staff to tell us what the growth policy says, but I'm not so sure that's such a good idea. And as John Ellis explained, I think we also need to read the code once in a while because it can be construed in ways that I think is not really the intent. For sure, our code does not say that a commercial use in the B3 can have an accessory use in an R4. It says that an R4 use can have an accessory use in the R4, but this primary use is in the B3. And that's, that's a non-residential, commercial, primary use in the B3, and they want to use R4 as their parking lot. That is not what the code permits. There's a big difference there. I would also like to reiterate John Ellis's comment about the third floor on that building at 307 Spokane. I'm a little surprised at all the, quite a bit of effort that's gone into this application. And I know that a third floor has always been contemplated on that building, and we are seeing a lot of third stories that are made up of short-term rentals in our B3 district downtown. And one of the only constraints for that kind of development is that you are required to supply parking, which is not available at 307 Spokane. But if they owned a parking lot right behind, perhaps we'd get several more short-term rentals built on that third story. What would prevent that? And in closing, I too am really tired of hearing applicants argue their case by threatening all the much worse things they could do. And I just think that's a really not very constructive way to proceed. Thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Okay, and Mr. Carter, you're unmuted.
Great. I guess I had a couple of comments. I think Eric actually touched on one or two. I want to be very clear. I, I hope anything that we have said is not, and what we've kind of proposed as what I think are is more reality than it is a threat. I don't, we don't want permission for this project because we threaten anybody. We want permission to do this project because a group of ambassadors and counselors have said, yes, this is, this is, they can do this, they're allowed to, and it's what's best for the whole, the whole group, the whole neighborhood, commercial and residential. So if any of my comments have come off as anything short of trying to be super fair, please redact those because under no, under no circumstance do I feel and nor do I want to come off as being threatening. It's more to me, reality of that something will happen. I don't know what. And this is a proposal that our group would like to be a part of that we feel is best. So I'll leave it at that. I heard a comment about maybe there is no example of what we're trying to do. Eric touched on it. Whether that should be a precedent for our project, I'll leave it up to you. But there is a building, First Interstate Bank, across the street that, not across an alley or adjacent, but across a city street, they have a parking lot in a WR4 zone. So there is something for us to point at, and we're relying on the code to also be in favor of our decision. But just want to note that because I heard that possibly there wasn't something like that. And then as far as the precedent, I don't think I have a good answer for it other than I would think that whoever tried to do what we're trying to do would have the, if they, if they're going to say, hey, they did it, there must be a reason for why they feel their situation is the exact same. And I don't know what the exact same means. Does it mean that they have the same size of building with a parking lot across the alley? And so now they're pointing, or are they just on this side of the alley? I don't, I don't know. So I personally don't feel it would necessarily be a precedent. I would hope that they would go under the same scrutiny that we are going under for approval or disapproval. So I want to float that final comment out there. And again, thank, thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Jake. Chris, any further comment from the public tonight or any written comments that you've received, Michelle, before we close the public hearing?
Yes, so let me just go over those that we did receive. We received 10 total written comments. Nine of those comments were against, one was in support. I will read off the list of those against and then those that were in support. Gary Elshire at 14 Kalispell Avenue, Christine Burnett, 306 Kalispell, Dane and Melanie Boat, 240 Columbia Avenue, John Ellis, 630 Summers Avenue, Molly Elm, 521 Kalispell Avenue, Ian Hassan, 560 Summers Avenue, Mr. and Mrs. Jones, 411 Kalispell Avenue, Kate McMahon, 151 Witchwood Lane, Doug and Nikki Reed at 520 Summers Avenue. And the one for the project is Mike Houck at 323 Kalispell Avenue. All of those comments will be appended to the packet tomorrow.
Thanks, Michelle. Chris, do you see anyone else wishing to provide comment?
I do not see any new hands raised.
Thank you, Chris. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. I would prefer to initiate our discussions and deliberations with a motion up or down either way, and we'll go from there. Please do.
A move that we deny WCP 20-13.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Henon. Steve, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think my comments at the planning board meeting still stand. I haven't seen anything or heard anything in this, in this round, in this meeting that has changed my mind. We did, we did vote against this project 4 to 1 at the planning board meeting. With that, I would like to say that I do applaud the owner of property in this group for trying to find a solution that they felt would be amenable to the neighborhood and also meet their needs. I just cannot agree to the way that this is. It's a reach at best legally to allow this. You can't, you can't say that we're not, we're not going to set a precedent with this and then point to something you view as a precedent to approve what you're doing. It can't happen both ways. And with that, I would also like to say that there is a danger, and the applicant did call it out that, and I don't think he did it in a threatening way at all. It's a, it is, it's a very real thing, and we just saw it over by the elementary, the new elementary school, that when we deny projects that offer a bit different density than what could, than what is allowed by law, sometimes we get people that come in and develop to the most density that they can. So there is always a risk of running that. At the same time, I just don't, this just does not fit in any way that I can see within our coding, with our zoning regulations. The precedent that they pointed to at First Interstate Bank happened a long time ago before we had our own city planning and zoning department. And I don't think, I think we would have had a little better discussion about that way back then at the time. So I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
John, you're muted. You are muted, John. You'll need a.
So I'm sorry. Further comments from the council before we take roll call?
I have one comment, John.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
Okay, I, I'd like to disclose that I, because my office is within a block of this proposal, I did attend a preliminary meeting before they brought it to the planning board. And I'm surprised that it actually had so much controversy because at the time, the neighbors were in favor of it, even the people that had been against the previous one that got denied. And so even though I do acknowledge that it's an illegal use of parking, it's still been a historic use. It's just, I think the, the project itself is too much for that street. During that discussion, I was hoping that the applicant would come in with something that was actually a lot smaller on Kalispell so that it might be more an appropriate type of aesthetic, I guess. And it might have been more acceptable, but the, I will be voting against it because I just feel like there's way too much public opposition. There's issues with the alley and, and then the, whether or not we're setting precedent to actually take away one of the most charming streets we have in town. We need to preserve our historic neighborhoods. And so a lot of good points were brought up. So unfortunately, because I know that they do need parking with that many people in there, but we, we know that people also buy buildings knowing what their parking restrictions are. And I agree at this point, I think it would be a burden imposed on a residential neighborhood that I just don't think is appropriate. But thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Further comments from the council? Not seeing any. Michelle, roll call, please. And the motion is to deny Item 6C of the agenda.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Henon?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton? Well, one more time, Rebecca. Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. The motion does carry unanimously. We're going to go ahead and adjourn for literally five minutes, just a quick leg stretch, and we'll reconvene at 9:25. Please be prompt so we can move the meeting along. Thank you. Do you mind doing a quick roll call, Michelle, just to make sure we have a quorum, please?
Counselor Quinell?
I'm here.
Counselor Sweeney?
Here.
Counselor Davis?
Here.
Counselor Henon? Counselor Fury?
I am here.
And Counselor Norton?
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. We'll move on to Item 7A of our agenda, which is consideration of appointing members to the rating panel and selection committee for the Armory Park Design RFP process. And just as a reminder, the recommendation from staff is that you appoint Director Maria Butts, Parks Foreman Bulmer, and one counselor to the rating panel and selection committee for this project. I'll turn it back to Maria if you have anything to add. Good evening.
Good evening. So you pretty much summarized it. We are looking for a volunteer for the rating panel and selection committee for the Armory Park RFP process. Armory Park is the largest park that we have. In 2012, we did a master plan for the future design, and we are now moving forward with phases for that master plan. We are going to be seeking requests for proposals from qualified firms to provide overall project management, engineering analysis and design, architectural design, bid administration, and construction management services for the next two phases of the plan. Phase three is the next phase that we'll be working on. As a complete package, it includes the construction of an adult fitness zone, extension of a shared-use path, drainage work, a well, and a parking lot. And we do plan to complete that in 2021. Phase four will likely be a future phase dependent upon funding for that, but it will include the completion of the parking lot, the construction of a pavilion, additional children's play area, and a picnic area with gazebo's. Once the requests for proposals are received by the deadline, which will be October 30th, the rating panel will rate the candidates the week of November 9th and will conduct interviews of qualified candidates the week of November 16th. The city's consultant selection policy does require that the rating panel and the selection committee be made up of the department director, staff, and council, council member. There's no financial requirement for this, and when funds- There's no financial requirement for this, and, uh, when funds will be, um, requested, I'll be coming back to all of you for that. So I could answer any questions if you have them.
Thanks, Maria. Any questions for Director Butz? Thanks, Maria, for the staff report, and excited to see this project come to fruition. I was just riding my bike through there today. So congratulations and thanks. And with that, we will need a motion and a willing counselor to sit on the rating panel and selection committee.
Mr. Mayor, as, uh, as the designee for the park board, I would be happy to volunteer for this, this if somebody else is interested or has the time.
Sounds great. Can we have a motion to that effect, appointing Frank as the council's on P and the other members as stated?
So moved.
They're second to the motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Henin. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Or, excuse me, we're not, we're not present tonight. Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Cornell?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney? Counselor Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Henin?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
And Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thanks, Michelle. That motion does carry unanimously, which brings us on to item eight of the packet, which communications from our city manager. Item eight A, you have Dana's written report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Dana on her report from the council?
I have a couple of comments.
Rebecca?
Uh, um, I asked Dana if she could report to the public about the election ballot box and also, um, our new flag since we had gotten some feedback from Maureen Cordoza about that.
Thank you, Rebecca. So, um, we do have a new flag. Um, it was replaced this weekend when we went to half-staff. I will talk about the photo that I just put up there for you, but, um, we are getting close to the two thousand and twenty, uh, general election that's going to be conducted solely through, uh, mail ballots. The ballots will be ma- mailed on October ninth to all registered voters who are active registered voters. Um, there will be one polling place available, open, um, to the public that will be at the election department at their south campus building. We will have a drop-off ballot box at City Hall this year. We are waiting, um, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are still waiting confirmation from the election department, whether or not we can use our utility dropbox for the ballots because with us being closed to the public right now due to COVID, we have concerns of putting that ballot box in the vestibule since it is not secured, um, by any means. On the day of election, we will, uh, election day, we will have, uh, judges here, and we will, they will be, um, accepting ballots from seven AM to seven PM. So that's on November third. So we're just waiting a little bit more confirmation. The approval forms that we used to, uh, need and why we didn't have, uh, ballots accepted at City Hall before, there is actually a hold on those, so, uh, they are not requiring people to fill them out. Um, there is, um, issues with that. So at this point, those are not required, so we could potentially have a, the utility billing box now used because of that, but we, like I said, are waiting confirmation there. We do have a couple other items to touch on if, um, there are no questions from the council on my current report. Um, as you can see on the screen, um, these, this little thing here is called a TEM check. It is a unit that's made by a Flathead Valley company, Heartstone Designs. The CVB, through the Montana Safety Grant, has purchased twenty, twenty of these units as a pilot program. City Hall will be, uh, will have two of them, one for upstairs where employees enter and one downstairs at our main doors. What it does is, is you put your hand under it, it takes your temperature, and at the same time squirts, um, hand sanitizer into your hand, uh, at the exact same time. So these are a new innovative design that's come out. So, uh, they, they're putting one at the visitor's center and other businesses throughout town. As you maybe monitored, COVID cases in Flathead County have increased at alarming rates. The Flathead County Health Department came out with a press release today stating that there were seven hundred and twenty-two new positive cases in the last two weeks. I talked to Lisa Jones, who's part of our crisis communications team, and will be working on a PSA regarding COVID again, uh, because of these increasing cases. I have concerns about Halloween, and, um, I know we've heard some comments from residents. Whitefish is a destination for Halloween, and with it being on a Saturday, um, I, I do worry about the impact that that could have on our COVID cases in our community. Flathead County Health Department has the same concerns about the, uh, critical status we're in with our hospitals, the attack tracing capabilities. And while I, I encourage them to consider when would closures be appropriate, um, they have not gotten feedback, supporting feedback from the commissioners or the Board of Health yet, but, um, the interim health officer is going to continue to ask the question of them, uh, when should they consider closures of restaurants? When I, when asked, you know, what could be done at the city level, obviously helping with messaging was something that Carrie asked us to do. They are looking for pictures of people with masks on from, um, whether it's from John or the city council. So if you have any of those pictures, those would be great. They do want to run an ad in, I believe, the Daily Interlake about that. And like I said, we're going to start working on a PSA. From a city standpoint, just so you're aware, we've had six employees total test positive since March. We've had forty-five employees quarantined as, because of being a close contact. And then we've had, um, during that earlier period, we did have eleven employees that were out due to childcare and school issues. So what that's done for our human resources department has put a very big burden on, um, Sherry as our human resources director, and so I'd like to publicly thank her for all of her work. Generally, we have maybe ten to twelve FMLA, FMLA cases a year. Well, with COVID, uh, triggering FMLA now with the Corona, uh, families first coronavirus relief act, she's had to do a lot more paperwork, um, every time we've had somebody sent home. So, um, just kind of get put in perspective, it's not looking great out there, and I think people really need to, to take the initiative to wear a mask. Um, and I'm happy to have any feedback from the city council if you guys have other comments about our approach to COVID. I do think restaurants need to be done at a county-wide level because if anything, we'll just be hurting our local businesses, and they'll all still be in Kalispell, which, I don't know if you've been to Kalispell, but I did visit some stores this weekend, and I was surprised at the number of masks that weren't being worn down there. So, um, from that, City Hall is going to remain closed through October sixteenth. At this point, um, we've had quite a few of our employees return that were quarantined, um, but we're going to play it by ear. I think, you know, we were closed early on with much lower cases. I think right now we have about seven hundred and thirty active cases in Flathead Valley. Um, and it's concerning, I think, from, um, for, for our city employees, but also the public and being able to contact trace anybody who would, uh, visit City Hall. So that being said, right now we are temporarily closed through October sixteenth. And, uh, I think there's any questions you guys might have after this.
Thanks, Dana. We'll start with Ben. Any questions, Ben?
Thank you.
Rebecca?
Some places talk about closing bars at eight PM. Um, you know, just, I think going into the fall, what we're most concerned about is that our hospitals won't be able to keep up with the demand and the impact on the healthcare professionals as well. So I do think we should actually think about recommended, um, changes soon since our numbers are so high. And I know nothing will happen before the election because it's become politicized, but I, I still think people could voluntarily, um, begin to look at sheltering more, wearing masks inside and outside. And, and also just reevaluating how well your families and you are all doing with the precautions that we know work to decrease the spread. Unfortunately, I feel like we're working against a disinformation campaign about the severity of the disease. And it will probably lead to more deaths and more, uh, chronic illness for people. So I, I think as a council, we should think about something that we could do locally besides just reminding people, but maybe staging things ourselves. But I'm cautious, having worked in healthcare for many years and having COVID since March. So thank you, Dana, for everything you're doing, though.
Thanks, Rebecca. Further questions from the council? And Dana, Frank?
Yeah, Dana, a couple of things that come to mind, and I, they're consistent with what you would otherwise do, but it seems to me that our pressure points here from, uh, public perspective to get people back in the boat is we need to get, um, North Valley Hospital. Uh, we need to get, um, the county health department to become more vocal and on a daily basis, more vocal. And anything we can do or you can do, um, to encourage that or make that happen, I think that would be, that would serve everybody very, very well. And I, because I don't know that, um, with our best intentions, given what we're dealing with, that we're going to get much traction otherwise. We've just, we've gotten to a point where I think, um, it's just going to require us to go and them to go door to door on a, and just say, no, we've got to do this. You're killing us. And the school system has got to do the same thing. So anything you can do to reach out to them and really encourage and push them to do something now rather than later or wait to see, they just need to get off the, off the, uh, off the ledge and just do something. So thanks for anything you can do.
Thank you. And just to touch on that, Frank, um, we are trying to work with scheduling, uh, meeting with Tamale, who's heading up the COVID response for the health department. Um, City of Columbia Falls is actually getting on board, which I thought was interesting. Susan sent an email saying she'd like to, you know, talk about it because they're getting questions about, uh, trick-or-treating. That's something that certain cities are regulating, um, and they've gotten questions. So we'll work on, and I'm working with Carrie, I reached out to her, and then she looped in all the city managers, which is great because I think that what they've recognized is they don't have staff time right now to even deal with this. But I think they should call upon us as resources because together I think we can send a stronger message than if it is, you know, obviously just Whitefish or, or just the health department. I think if we got all of us on board, it would be great. So I'm going to continue that communication and try to, try to get us all on the same page with some of the same messaging. Um, you know, our, our, um, PSAs are going to be potentially grant funded through that Montana safeties, uh, the safety grant that the CVB got. And so if there's a way that we can pull in a speaker from the, the hospital, the health department, I think that that's something that we'll look at doing because it just sends a stronger message as well. And Frank, can I, but sorry to interrupt, I'm welcome, I'd like, I would love to reach out to the city attorneys too. And a bit, I don't, I, like, I don't know what we can do at this point. I mean, Dana's doing a rock star job of managing this entire thing, but I'm welcome to reach out to them too and see what their opinions are.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my, my thought on the matter is really that we just need to do whatever we can if it can be effective. If we think we can make some headway with these folks in Kalispell or the county attorney, that would be just great. It's worth the time to try anyway. We just need to get people to have a sense of urgency to deal with this problem.
It, it will be interesting to see how the, um, media takes the press release from the health department because it, it was pretty threatening about closing down. So, um, they've already asked the commissioners and the board of health chair if they could close down restaurants. Uh, they must not have gotten the traction that they needed to make that call. They're going to ask again Thursday, and I will continue to urge her to do what they think is best for this community and the healthcare system. And if that includes shutting down restaurants, takeout only, again, that's what it is. But again, like I said, and, and I think you would agree, Frank, that to be effective, it's going to have to be countywide at this point because our healthcare system doesn't know boundaries between cities and the county.
That's right. Thanks.
Thanks, Dana. We'll move on to communications from the council and mayor, and we'll start this evening with Ben. Any final comments this evening?
No additional comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Rebecca?
This time, also concerned about the Blackfeet Nation. They have over three hundred cases now, even with shutting down and eliminating their whole summer tourism. So, you know, it's serious and it's, um, really sad that we're in this position as a nation. But we do have some individual choice about how we, um, how we proceed. So I, I hope people really continue to take this pandemic seriously and do what they can to keep themselves, their families, and others safe. And also just wanted to thank Dana and Angie again for their hard work for the city. We did their performance reviews tonight, and they, um, they got lots of excellence. So really appreciate you guys stepping up and working so hard to get us through the pandemic as well. And to the council too, and I was thinking as that we were talking about what a amazing job Dana and Angie have done helping us with civil rights and healthcare safety. And one person that really goes unacknowledged frequently is our wonderful mayor, John. And so, John, I just wanted you to know that you're right in the front lines with both of them and all this staff and the department heads, and, you know, I, you do an amazing job. And I just really want you to know that everybody really, really appreciates you. So thank you for your work too.
Thank you, Rebecca. That means a lot to me. Appreciate that. Andy?
Um, I guess, yeah, just to chime in a little bit on people being safe out there, having been through a positive case at the bakery here in the last couple of weeks. I don't think people really quite understand the economic impact, and we had one employee test positive. And that employee had been out camping and partying on Labor Day weekend, and that employee tested positive. As it turned out, then we had everyone tested, and out of the fourteen of us, she was the only positive case, which I attribute to our good practices there, is everyone wears masks, we do social distance, we don't have the public come in. But that said, what it did ultimately end up with was over a week's loss of revenues for the business. It ended up in a week's loss of wages for all of the workers there, all twelve people that get a paycheck. I don't get a paycheck. I don't think that people necessarily understand that what they do on their own private time really does affect so many people around them. And we were very lucky to not have any kind of spread within the business. But by the same token, the economic impact is quite devastating, and we're just like everybody else. I mean, most of the restaurants have been enclosed, have been closed at some point over the last month in this community because one employee tests positive. Unfortunately, almost all of them have had really good practices, and that employee has been an outlier and... But I think workers are going to have to really sort of come to grips with the fact that you get a social life or you get a job right now, you kind of got to pick one or the other. And I really hope that people do understand it. And even though our commander in chief said that it's nothing to be afraid of, and it's a simple and easy thing today, well, he's a bonehead. I'm sorry, I'm going to say that on national Whitefish radio here because, you know what? That's not the case, and it's something that we still do need to take very, very seriously. And it's going to get worse, and there's going to be a lot of businesses that will not survive this winter because every time somebody gets a cold or a sniffle, everybody's going to sit on pins and needles till a test comes back. And when that test comes back, if it's positive, that business is going to close for a couple of weeks. And there's not a lot of food and beverage businesses that can do that too many times. So other than that, again, thanks to staff, everybody, council for all of our hard work and keep our nose to the grindstone, and hopefully we can continue to make a difference.
Thanks, Andy. Ryan?
Well said, Andy.
I don't have anything else to add.
Thanks, Ryan. And finally, Steve?
Yeah, thanks, Andy, for that. I'm kind of on the front lines, too, at school. I would just add that to what you said. How many people know this COVID unit? Kalispell Regional has been full for a couple of weeks now, and they're putting people in other places, and we don't have a COVID unit at North Valley Hospital. If they come in and there's a suspicion, or then they go down to Kalispell. So our local county health system is being overwhelmed as we speak. It doesn't, we don't necessarily see that in our faces very often. And the other piece that you said about a sniffle and getting tested, it doesn't happen. You have to have very specific things before they'll test you. And I've been through it with school, because I asked to be tested and I had to, they told me the conditions under which they would allow me to be tested, not at my own expense, which is not something I can afford. So the underreporting of it is also something that is an untold story that we don't hear about, I don't think, very much. And in terms of schools, the, the plan is moving forward for them to reopen fully after next Friday, so starting following Monday, or starting, I'm sorry, starting next Monday, the plan is for the schools to be fully open here in Whitefish, as we are in Kalispell. And I don't know what to say about it. I disagree with it. I've pushed hard against Kalispell School District Five with their plan, and we're relying on the county health department, which is overwhelmed. And so thank you, Dana, for confirming the fact that they are overwhelmed, and we're just not doing what we need to do to keep people safe. With that said, I just wonder if we need to have the city reach out to the people on Columbia and Kalispell and the next street over to just say, hey, maybe Halloween, we should just not offer candy and just not, just not invite that into our town. I don't know how we do that, but I think if there's only a few people handing out candy, we're not going to have a problem that we would otherwise have. And we would need to get on that sooner than later. I don't know how we, how we do that, but it's just stuck in my mind throughout this process.
So Steve, I'll, I'll touch real quick on that trick-or-treat comment. The CDC actually came out with guidelines about trick-or-treating, and their guidelines state that you should avoid trick-or-treating in areas that are experiencing increased community spread. We fit that category. So I think in our PSA, and what I was kind of brainstorming was, let's say, hey, CDC doesn't recommend it. What I'm trying to get out of the health department is to them also give us a recommendation so we could include it in that PSA. We hope to start working on that by the end of this week, and I haven't talked to John yet to see what his schedule is, but if he's not available to do it, I'm happy to do this one, because we do want to get it out sooner rather than later before, you know, people, they, they can make that decision. I think it's a hard one to regulate from a closure standpoint, but getting that word out there, discouraging it, I think, is something that would be helpful, especially if we can cite the CDC and the health department all in that.
Okay. Thank you. I don't think that, I mean, the people that live in there, and I know a lot of people that do, and I think majority of those people would be on board with just being like, you know what, this Halloween, we're not doing it. And they might save themselves some money, actually, the process.
That's true. I live in that area, and yeah, you would save me some money, Steve.
All right, I'm done. It's late. Sorry.
Thanks, Steve. I think everything's been said tonight. I have nothing further to add. Thanks for everyone attending this evening. Dana, anything additional from staff tonight?
No, not tonight.
All right. Thanks very much, and be well, everyone. We are adjourned.